Going up shortly.
Okay, hold on. Seeing no objection, I call the meeting to order. Tom, if you're here, could you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please? Oh. All right, Tom's having connectivity problem. I can see you. I see you. Okay. Ginger, can you unmute him maybe? Yeah, you're unmuted now, Tom, I think.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. At this council meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Ginger, I believe we have public comment. Do you want to start us off, please?
Yes, the first person for public comments is Sue Alice. I've just allowed her to talk, and Sue, are you are you able to speak now?
Well, you tell me. I'm unmuted, so I withdraw my comment because Sharon Lowry was good enough and Jennifer were good enough to explain to me that I really was asking you all a question. And you didn't answer me, so I really withdraw it. However, I will still ask it. What document, what legal documents, state constitution, legislative action, or the city charter actually allows the governor to authorize the governor to tell us the city what to do? So I understand you can't answer me. I'll unmute, I'll unmute, or I'll mute now.
Thank you. All right, Ginger, next.
Okay, the next person that we have is Wayne Radloff. Wayne, if you'll give me just one moment, I'm unmuting you now. If you'll please check and see if you're able to speak.
Yes, this is Wayne Radloff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I listened in on last week's budget committee meeting, and I reviewed the 2020 budget update to be presented by Jay Venicki later this meeting. I appreciate the time and attention the city's budget is receiving by staff, budget committee, and the entire city council. My primary concern is SPOST funding. I do not believe SPOST revenues will come in as projected. I understand receipts are monthly and are based on all the cab sales, and any estimates decreases may be adjusted later. Monthly adjustments may not be quick enough as we progress further into the fiscal year. And as an aside, I'd like to see SPOST money one day reallocated for more traffic calming and sidewalks. I ask city council to develop better processes to permit more timely responses to adjustments our economy will have in the weeks and months ahead and its impact on the city's budget this year and in the out years. Some of these processes are internal, and some can be developed with DeKalb County and other cities. Long term, I am very optimistic. Short term, I have a different take. I believe the view from the bridge right now is much different than what is occurring and will occur below the waterline. Please do not spend money we don't have. Let's wait and see. Or develop better systems and processes to orient, observe, decide, and act. Be the best stewards possible of the taxpayers' checkbook. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ginger, whenever you're ready to announce the next speaker.
Okay, the next speaker that I show is Worth Wells. So hold on one moment for me, and I'm getting. Mr. Wells, are you able to speak now?
I am, thank you.
You go ahead. Thank you.
I'm glad to see everybody's doing well. I just wanted to sort of comments were along the same as the previous gentleman's regarding the budget items, and he was said it much better than I could, but same concerns about financial stewardship as we move forward, and hope the city can be as conservative as possible and moving forward and maintain the reserves that the city's built up and that's really it.
Thank you. Ginger, whenever you're ready.
Okay, and the final person that I show is Joseph Martinez, and if you'd give me just a moment, I'm pulling him up. Mr. Martinez, are you able to speak now?
Ginger, we're not hearing anything.
Joe Martinez, are you able to speak now? Your showing is unmuted.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
A little bit. Could you speak a little louder, maybe?
Absolutely. Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. So, hi, I'm Joe Martinez, North Peachtree Road in Dunwoody. And just wanted to speak on two topics. One is the budget, and I share everybody, I think there were two people that raised the same concerns about giving the SPOST and the need to have the funds from sales taxes. I also, based on my experience in real estate development and general contracting, now is really a great time to be taking advantage of some arbitrage in the markets with construction costs coming down, especially on things that are oil and gas intensive such as paving. So it'd be a good time to press pause on our repaving and reassess the unit costs and prices that we are looking at for paving and take advantage of the oil markets being where they're at, given that oil is the major input into asphalt paving. Okay, and then the second one that I'd like to talk about is an initiative that I'm working on that I'd like to approach council on probably in the coming weeks, which is via vernon.org. And it's basically an installation of, the first phase would be an installation of signage along Mount Vernon that provides directional signage for pedestrians and cyclists. As we're all seeing, there's a tremendous increase in walking and biking with all the things that are going on. And our hope is that that will continue and that we have a unique opportunity to be able to point out the unique features of our community. And so this initiative seeks to install temporary signage that'd be maybe the point of a year or two years and take a look at how everybody likes the signage working that highlights points of interest along Mount Vernon for pedestrians and cyclists. Things like Dunwoody Nature Center, the JCC, Crema Coffee, our Novo Cucina, things like that. And really, just it's kind of a pilot project to see how people like that that dovetails into a larger effort that would be.
Thirty, thirty seconds remaining.
So, you know, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're working on that and to go to via vernon.org if you're interested in the initiative and the effort. We're going to be raising some money for the signage, and then if we can get some funds raised, we'll come to you for authorization to install them along the right away. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, Ginger, are you going to open it up in case anybody else has comments, please?
Yes, if anyone else has any comments, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, and I'll let you speak. I do not show any raised hands.
Well, we will have public comment again at the end of the meeting should anyone have additional comments. Thank you, Ginger. Next, our reports and presentations. First, we're going to hear from Michael Smith on the Peeler Road sidewalk project update.
Okay. Good evening. Can everybody see my screen? I guess first, first of all, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Michael.
Okay, let me try. Try this again. Okay, how about now?
It's, now it's there, thank you.
Okay. All right, so as the discussed at the budget committee meeting, I'm providing an update on the Peeler Road sidewalk project we that we recently received bids on. Just, we've gotten a few questions about exactly what the project entails. So briefly, the project is on the south side of Peeler Road, mostly along the border of Brookrun Park. The western limit or the limit closest to Shandley Dunwoody begins at Equestrian Way near Adams Road and Old Village Lane and goes all the way to about 175 feet east of Charing Lane and ties into where the North Peachtree Intersection Project stopped. It includes storm drainage, curb and gutter, bicycle lanes on both sides of the road, sidewalk, and then final paving. And it also includes pedestrian crossings connecting to Brookrun Park at the Cab Drive and Charing Lane. These are the concept drawings of the the project shows here, the the beginning at Equestrian Lane, the yellow is the sidewalk along the south side of the of Peeler Road. Continuing on to the the back entrance to the park. A note here on the right side of the the drawing, there was discussion in the community about whether there was a need to have sidewalk along the road that that was mostly parallel to the existing path in Brookrun Park. So the the final drawings that were the contractors bid on show a connection from the sidewalk to the path there where when you're driving down Peeler, you can see the path about 15 or 20 feet off the road. So the proposal is to connect the path or the sidewalk into the path at that location and then not have any sidewalk along the roadway until you get back close to the end of the project where the the path near the playground again is close to to Peeler Road. So we would eliminate that sidewalk and just use the path on that section. And then the other thing to call your attention to is there, near the skate park parking lot, there's a yellow line drawn, kind of a straight line connecting two sections of the the path, the path coming up the hill to the parking lot, meanders there and ties into the parking lot, and then meanders back out to the road. And so there's about a 200-foot section there that we were proposing to for people that are using this primarily as transportation along Peeler, maybe to go to the bus stop or for for other reasons to to go ahead and make that connection and take the for sidewalk users, take that loop out of of the park there. We think we've looked at and we can meander that short section between trees and would only have to take out two small trees to to make that connection there. Before I go on to the bids, does anybody have any questions about the the layout or the design?
Michael, this is Stacy Harris. I actually have a quick question. So is, was the thought behind eliminating the sidewalk along the road, and I understand it's very close to the path? And in driving by it today, like, there's a marked dirt path, you know, right on the side of the road. So is the thought and hope that those people who are currently walking in the dirt will actually go up to the trail? Or do we think that that dirt path is going to continue?
The hope is that they would walk on the path, and we tried to and the concern, I guess, from some of the residents was by putting the sidewalk out by the road, you would you would have to take out more trees along the road. We tried, so we tried to connect it into the path in the areas where the path is already close and parallel to the roadway, and then that's why we added this this short little connection here so that, you know, because a lot of, most pedestrians are going to take the most direct route unless they're walking for recreation. So we thought, you know, as long as we can keep it fairly parallel to the road, that the people should be able to use that path.
Follow-up question, is one of the connections where there's almost a dirt path that connects from Peeler to the trail, is that one of the connections? It's almost already.
Yes, that's that's this one. I don't know if you can see my mouse, but here on the east or the right side of this drawing here, that's that's that connection there. When you drive on Peeler, you can see the path right there beside the road.
One of them. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
So, this is the mayor. I can't see y'all in this mode for some reason, and so if you'll just shout out your questions, that's all I can do.
Hey, Lynn, this is John. I have a couple of.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Michael. You said that the crosswalk across Peeler itself, there's two streets, there's Sharing Drive and Charing Lane. Sharing Drive is further to the east. I believe Sharing Lane is closer to North Peachtree. Which one was the crossing going to be at?
It will be at this one, which I think is Sharing Drive, where the path is close to the road and where Councilman Harris was talking about, there already is a footpath there.
Okay, so I just want to make sure. So it's Sharing Drive. Now, there's MARTA bus stops at both Sharing Drive and Charing Lane on the Brookrun property, let's say. And we're going to eliminate the crossing or the sidewalk there in orange along the path, along the street. Is there a certain place or certain requirements for bus stops to have a certain amount of pavement or stoppage or a place to stand? Are they going to be standing on the trail? How does that work in this location right here at Sharing Drive?
I know I'm not there. Okay, so there's a bus stop on the Sharing Drive side of Peeler at this location, and then the, I think, the one on the south side is here at Charing Lane. So we were proposing to tie the sidewalk back in there at Charing Lane, and we can certainly you know, put in a pad along with the sidewalk where that bus stop is. I think the one in this area at Sharing Drive is on the north side of the road. We had not.
There is one on the south side as well. I was on, or at least on Google Maps this this afternoon. There's one there as of October of 19.
Okay. Okay, if there is, we can, you know, we can add a pad where those bus stop locations are.
Okay, but, okay, so right there at Sharing Drive, there'd be a crossing coming over and maybe a pad for the MARTA stop. Let's go to the other one, please, is that the Sharing Lane?
Okay.
I understand you want the connection back from the path to the sidewalk to connect that. But at Sharing Lane, if you look, it's just on maybe under the word engineering project and that little purple line right there. There's actually a walking path from Sharing Lane directly across Peeler and into Brookrun Park connecting to the circle path. So a little bit more to.
Okay.
Right there, there's a walking path from Sharing Lane straight across from our, from our trail.
Right. Yeah, Sharing Lane is right, right here. You see that?
Okay, you're right. I'm sorry. There's, there's a, I'm just trying to save the trees, I guess, from the aspect, right? And Piscus, I was wondering if there's right now, there's a walking path straight across into the trail. It's not diagonal, it's straight across.
Okay.
And if you look on the Google Maps, you can see the walking path. So you took the diagonal. I'm wondering if there's makes more sense for a straight across with a pad for the MARTA.
We can look at that. I think we we pull it, we peeled off the path at the where we're showing it here because the path starts to meander back away from the road again, but you know, we can look at whether we can make the connection we're showing with, because I think the trees are pretty thin in that area that we can either try to make that connection that we're showing without removing trees or look at bringing it around and you coming out where you're talking about.
Okay, now the only other project or question I had regarding the Peeler aspect, was there any lighting on the project?
There's, there's not lighting currently in the budget, but you know, if the funding was available, we could, we could add lighting.
All right, so that's something to have in the future, then. That's all I wanted to make. Right now, some parts of Peeler are extremely dark.
Right.
All right, that's all my questions I had, Ms. Mayor.
Anybody else? Shout them out. Looks like I can't see you. Okay, Michael, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the, so we received the bids in March. We received 12 bids, which is you know, we haven't received that many bids on a project that I can remember in recent memory. So there was a lot of interest out there. These are the, the, this is a summary of the bids here. The lowest bid was submitted by Construction 57 Incorporated in the amount of 760,000,198. So that we were initially planning to bring those bids to the council at the first regular meeting in May. But based on discussions over, you know, the financial concerns and cash flow with the SPOST, we are proposing to bring that to the council in June for consideration. We have the Georgetown Gateway Project out being advertised for bids right now, and they're due back May 26. And that's a project that we're, the city really is committed to from the standpoint that there's federal funding involved, and that federal funding has to be authorized for construction before the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, the state fiscal year. So, and that's a really big project, the biggest dollar value that the city has undertaken. So we the thought is that we will wait till those bids come in and see where that project stands. And if if it comes in within the budget, then we think that there's there's funding available to go ahead and proceed with the Peeler Road Sidewalk Project. The bids for Peeler Road are valid through July 10. So the only real downside to waiting until June is that you know, we'll get a little bit later into the construction season, so it would, it would probably push Peeler Road construction back to the to the point where we wouldn't be able to finish in time to get it paved this year. The paving would have to be pushed in next spring. But waiting till June also would would give us another month of SPOST collection data as a as a data point to see where where things are tracking. I think, I think by June, we should have numbers on the April SPOST collection, so so that's staff's recommendation is to revisit this in June. And we can talk about the Peeler Road bid and the Georgetown Gateway bid at that point.
Does anybody have questions? I gotta speak up because I can't see you.
I guess, if I may, Lynn, this is Jim.
That's fine.
I think this is, you know, partially on the agenda because of questions I raised during the budget committee meeting where we were, you know, revisiting where we were at in light of current events. And I just like to say, I think, you know, this is a good way to move forward. We'll, you know, every week, you know, every day, every week, every month, we'll we'll have a little bit, you know, more clear picture in our crystal balls than, you know, we have now where things are quite cloudy. So I like the way this is heading.
Lynn, this is John. I also agree with Jim in the sense of the budget committee and what we were told in the sense of the funding and the timeliness of the funds, and I should say the timing of the funds that we're either collecting or paying out. There's a ebb and flow of city finances, and there's a low part, low point of finances that happens in August, September timeframe. And we need to make sure that we can weather that timeframe. So I'm looking forward to hearing more financial information coming in the next couple of items, but I'm good with staying and waiting until we, the very deadline that we need to before we decide the road or Georgetown, because we need to know what the funds coming in.
Okay, does anybody have other questions? Or disagree with staff's recommendation? Now would be a good time to say that. Okay, so Michael and Eric, I think you have your direction.
We do, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Everyone's back. Nice to see you all again. Next is the budget update with Jay Venicki.
Trying to share the screen, make sure everybody can see it.
You got it, Jay. We can see.
I can see it.
We can see it, and council, if you have questions, just shout them out, and somebody needs to mute because I'm hearing myself. But thank you. Just shout them out if you have questions.
Okay. Um, everybody, this was a presentation given to the budget committee last week, and nothing informative has changed off of this between then and now, but part of this, we want to do an update on where we are financially and also talk about the capital funding because staff realizes that that's the part that needs to be addressed first by mayor and council. No actions needed today, but what we want to do is start the discussion so that everybody's informed about it. First, a very quick month in review. Dunwoody's originally state of emergency was declared on March 18. The mayor and council were given a written analysis of the city's financial condition on March 21, and there was a public discussion of that information at the March 23 meeting. So basically with Mary Deutsch and the city manager said, let's go ahead and start the ball rolling on this, and what we plan to do is almost at every council meeting, bring you an update on that. Based off that original discussion in March, guidance came to staff, and we've been reviewing the approved 2020 budget for recommended changes. And today's presentation is going to focus on SPOST, it's going to focus on hotel motel, regular capital funding, and at the end, I want to talk about TANs, tax anticipation notices, and fund balance usage. So a little bit of this is a 101. First off, let's talk about capital projects and the way they're done in the city of Dunwoody. Dunwoody basically has three buckets of capital funding. Their SPOST, their hotel motel, and their general capital. Now, what we do is we're going to go through each of these individually and show proposed changes and discuss why they were brought forward in this way. First one we want to go to is SPOST. Now, SPOST is the most restrictive capital funding that the city has. It's limited to only public safety, only transportation, and a very limited amount for general repairs. Now, the original 2020 budget for SPOST, the revenue had an anticipation of 6.8 million of new SPOST funding. Now, that's actually lower than what came in in 2019. We had already taken a $200,000 decrease just to be a little bit conservative as we roll into the new year. So there's already been a reduction from what we probably would have seen in a normal. Also, remember, since receipts are monthly and they're based on the cab sales, not just Dunwoody, any estimates that we're doing of decreases may be adjusted upwards or downwards at a later date. For those that are unaware, SPOST comes basically to us in a monthly wire transfer. We see a dollar figure. The city of Decatur and I have been going back and forth to try to look at numbers, and we've also been working with staff from the city of Atlanta on just impacts in the area. One other thing we've been looking at is the Fiscal Research Center at Georgia State, and full disclosure, I'm on a sideboard with them with the Center for State and Local Finance, so there is a relationship there, has put out a sales tax impact study already on the statewide in aggregate, looking at, it's somewhere between a 2.4 and a 4% decrease to GDP, that's gross domestic product, which could translate upwards of a 10 to 15% sales tax decrease for this year. That being said, what we're looking at is in the draft you're seeing here, and it should be on your screen now, is a 25% decrease in anticipated new revenue. And what I want to do is walk through, and part of this is for the public's benefit too, so that they see all the numbers that are out there. I'm going to go through how to read the schedule first before we actually go. Okay, going left to right, the first two are pretty self-explanatory, the department and the project. And the next column you see is the FY 2020 current budget. These are the dollar amounts that the city, the mayor and council approved last fall for the 2020 new money. So if you look down there, it totals up to 6.8 million worth of new anticipated funding. Now, the next part we put down for reference. Now, this is not every project that's in there. Now, the next part we put down for reference. Now, this is not every project that's in there, but it's ones that we wanted to make sure council was aware of. So there was about two point seven of rollover budget that will be, would have been addressed normally at this time of year, but we need to talk about in the context of decreasing revenue. Part of the reason we want to put this on there was it was all the projects that we have rollover funding available for, for these, where they're affected, and also to put in the police funding projects which are on there. In some cases, most of this money you see, this two point seven is already spent. So in the case of the video surveillance and the radio coverage, most of that obligation has been there, but we didn't want the council to think that those projects were being done away. Okay, so you take the current budget, you take the prior budget, combine the two, and it's your new budget. However, with a twenty-five percent decrease in SPOS anticipated, we need to reduce one point seven million. Now, let me also talk a little bit about this twenty-five percent reduction. If you think of the year in normal, just straight line, and, and sales tax is not exactly a straight line, there's a little bit of increase for Christmas sales, but in general, it's about eight percent each month throughout the year. Right now, we know that the first two checks we've gotten this year is about one million, and we've probably spent about one point two. However, also remember, state law requires that capital projects be done on a project basis, not necessarily an annual. So some of those expenditures, for instance, the radio coverage are actually covered with rollover funds. Now, if we took this and took eight percent for the first two months, the first two checks we've gotten, and then decreased it by half for say, four or five months, get down to instead of eight percent, it's four percent. So we do that for a few months, get back up to six percent for the last few months of the year. That's how we're focusing on this twenty-five percent cut on it. And again, in talking with people and counterparts in other cities, we're all again waiting for the first numbers to come in, but we go up on a realistic scenario, that's probably where everybody should go until there's data. But now back to the schedule. The part you see under receive change talks a lot about how the projects that Michael was talking about and the changes and increases to them. So if you look going from the top, there are no proposed changes on the police ones. We still need to replace the vehicles that we have. The video surveillance and the radio coverage improvement and the computer replacements are all projects that are needed to keep public safety up and running, and, and most of that money has been spent. The park repair part had about five thousand dollars worth of rollover funding, so the new budget for that would be one oh five. And one of the things I'd like to commend staff on that's happened during this, this time where we've been, had city hall shut to the public, is they repurpose some of their time in getting things done like repairs we haven't been able to get to. Um, the city hall repair part of it, we actually have about fifty thousand dollars worth of rollover funding in there. So what we're going to propose there is just not, is to decrease it by fifty thousand. Part of city hall repair money we've got is in case we have anything big, heaven forbid, an HVAC blow up or something like that. This is, gives us some cash for that, which is why we can decrease some of it. The rest are the projects that Michael was talking about earlier. Uh, the traffic calming part, we can basically cover with operating as it comes up. The Pila Road sidewalk, we just discussed. Uh, the shambly at Spalding Interchange is one of those with the bigger decrease proposed right now of one point one million to still keep four hundred and thirty-seven thousand of funding there to keep the project moving. Winter's Chapel multi-use has about eight hundred thousand of rollover, so now the new figure is reflected about seven oh two, which is what we should be able to get through for this, this calendar year. Mount Vernon sidewalk stays at fifty thousand. Mount Vernon corridor, we can actually decrease to twenty. Road resurfacing stays at roughly about three million. Also remember that there's four hundred and thirty-seven thousand worth of L-MIG that doesn't show on here, so we still have that in, in the hopper with it. The West Side Connector, basically what we're doing is the rollover funding will stay, but the connector, the new funding will go away. And North Shallowford at Peachford based, Pila, excuse me, uh, based off our newer information will go up to two hundred thousand. What this does is it allows, and we will bring this back after we get feedback from council, uh, is allows the city to modify the SPOS budget for twenty twenty and decrease the new funding from five point eight million, which is still below the seven million received last year, down to five point one. So you'd actually see a little bit over a twenty-five, twenty-six percent decrease from the previous year's collections. And that's how SPOS would work. And in some cases also, so you know, this is managed on basically a cash basis throughout the year. Both Linda Neighbors and uh, Michael Smith, because he deals with primarily with this funding source, are consistently looking every month at cash in, cash out, to make sure that we can finish these projects by the end of the year. Okay, now that's SPOS, and what I don't want to do is talk without letting everybody have questions. So if you have questions at this point on this particular bucket, please ask.
Um, just, go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, Jay, and I don't know if, if Michael's still there, I, I, but Jay, you may be able to answer this. Uh, the Winter's Chapel, um, the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction to that project, is that changing the scope of the project at all?
Let me defer to. Yeah, I can answer that. Uh, on that one and the shambly, Dunwoody Spalding, we're, we're not so much uh, cutting the budget. We're not proposing to cut any scope on those projects. It's more of a, a timing issue. Both projects, we've got weight on the utilities to relocate their, their facilities, and based on their availability, they're projecting that it will be late this year at, at best before they are out of our way. So what we, the reason we cut those two projects back is because we weren't going to be able to start construction and start spending the money until the very end of the year anyway. So it's more that we're proposing that that money gets, that funding gets pushed into a future year if necessary because of the timing of the project.
Okay, so just to uh, to clarify then, so like, for example, on, on a Winter's Chapel one, the seven oh two, nine seventy-five is, is money that you anticipate spending on that project in this year, and in essence, the two thirty, seven oh four rolls over to next year to, for the, for, that'll be money that'll be spent on that project in, in next year's budget. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, and I, and I would say that the uh, the seven oh two is conservative and that I'm not sure that we will even spend that much this year by the time the utilities are relocated. Uh, and then the, the part that is being cut, the two thirty, you know, that, if the collections end up coming in better than we project, or, you know, a lot of that's going to depend on collections. If, if collections really lag behind, then that money may need to be budgeted uh, next year. You know, as part of next year's budget, if it never gets collected this year.
Okay, um, uh, thank you. So I, you know, and my main reason for asking my question on that specific project is, is I believe that's a very important project for the city uh, for a number of reasons. It's connection, it's a gateway to the city, it's connection to uh, projects planned uh, both in Gwinnett, Sandy Springs, and also in Peachtree Corners. Uh, so I, I believe that's an important project, and I didn't, I just wanted to ensure that we weren't planning to change the scale of that project. I, I, I anticipate, I expected that it was exactly like you said, because I know there's some problems with the, the uh, utility relocation there, so um, I just wanted to ensure that we weren't changing the project, and as long as we're not. Um, you know, I would, I would, I would hope that you would come back to us if, if anything on the scope of that project was going to be changed significantly.
Yeah, we're, the design is not changing, that, that we're finalizing. Uh, it's more just being slowed down and, and a timing, timing thing with the utilities and the funding.
Okay, tha- thank you. That, that answers my question.
Anybody else before Jay goes on?
Yes, I have a question. This is Stacy. So one point one million dollars out of the shambly at Spalding intersection, so what's actually going to be done then?
That's another, that's the other one with the, the timing. I mean, the, the one point four million is still the project budget needed to construct the project. But we said, based on utilities and when our contractor would be able to start, the most that we would probably be able to spend this year anyway is the four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, so we're just saying, if the money doesn't come in in this year's SPOS, then that one point one five million, you know, s- some of that, depending on how much we collect, will have to be allocated in next year's budget. So as, as we find out more about how collections are going, as we go through the budget process, hopefully we'll be at a point where we can say, okay, this is how much we're going to have to plan for next year's budget.
So what is that, that, yeah, that, the four thirty-seven that is remaining in the budget, is that just for utility movement, or is there anything else going on at that intersection?
The, the four thirty-seven, we, that really is a function of, we said, okay, let's assume that we have to cut SPOS by twenty-five percent or whatever it is. Okay, here's one point one five million that we know we're not going to get spent this year. The four thirty-seven is more of what's left. It's more of the leftover. It's not saying, okay, this is what we're really going to spend this year. It's just, this is how much we have left to spend after we make these cuts. And so if, if we got a contractor on board and they started in November, you know, they'll be in kind of the ramp up phase, and, and they wouldn't be billing most of that one point four million. They would, you know, we'd limit it to the four thirty-seven if that's all we had.
Is that intersection improvement, is that seasonal driven like paving, or can they work in the winter?
But you know, winter time is not ideal construction, but there are things that can be done in winter. I mean, you don't have to shut it down completely, but it's, it's usually wetter and colder, and so progress is slower, but, but they can work in the winter.
I would just say, kind of like, Tom, um, I don't want this project to go away. I mean, the reason why that intersection is in the budget this year, it's because it's the most dangerous intersection in our city. So um, I want to make sure that that stays a priority to, to be fixed, so our citizens can be safer.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add that we didn't, the way this balanced out, we weren't saying that one is, one project's a priority over another. It was Winter's Chapel and Shambly Dunwoody, we looked at it and said, based on the schedule the utilities have given us, we can't spend most of this money this year anyway, so that's, that's a good place to start looking to, to push things down the road.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Lynn, I'm done.
Michael, is the utility delays um, just the way it goes these days?
Yeah, there, we've, it's been tougher uh, the last couple of years. One is there's more utilities than ever in the right of way, and so anytime you go to do something, there's more people in the way. Uh, with construction kind of booming the last few years, especially infrastructure and transportation, you know, everybody's pulling for the same utility resources to get those facilities out of the way. Um, and then even recently with the, the pandemic, Georgia Power has said they're working limited crews. Uh, we've, you know, they've been having to pull off some of our projects because they've limited their crews. They've, they've spread them out across the state so that they can be hyper-responsive to any utility outages, knowing that a lot of people are working from home. And so they've taken a lot of their crews that would normally be working in the metro area and spread them out all over the state. So we're, I mean, we're really, that's probably the main thing driving the schedule on our projects right now is the utility relocations.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions about this part of the presentation?
Yeah, I've got, I got some questions slash, and some just thoughts. Um, so Jay, do we have like a checkbook on SPOS funds? And just what is our current balance on SPOS? So let, let me frame it this way. Where I'm getting at is, I don't want to spend any money until we get it. Number one. Number two, we don't have a priority of this list either. So I know we're going to try to sprinkle the magic dust around different projects at the same time, but at the end of the day, shouldn't the council be prioritizing these uh, if we can't do everything?
But Joe, we, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's the mayor. We, these projects have been prioritized in the past. And so, you know, we work off a list of intersections that need to be improved, and sidewalks that need to be installed, and roads that need to be paved. So just um, and that's why we're going through this process though, is to discuss which of the projects that are in process and how we spend fewer, you know, how we allocate our diminishing resources. So just want to be clear that somewhere along the line, a council did prioritize these.
Sure. So, so for Jay, will you be updating us with like, what we've got in the bank and what we've spent? Because some of these things we've already finished, and some of these have been like percentage complete, right? So there's things we bought. Um, do, would, in the future, would you have another level of granularity to show completion and things we have spent and money we have in the bank on this?
Yeah, to actually let you know, if you want to see the project, remember, everything's done on a project level, not an annual level on a, on a capital project. Georgia law requires it being done at the project level, so that you don't look at the twelfth month in particular, because in some cases, like your expenses that will hit in March for this year, actually the revenue form was earned in twenty nineteen, and you need to look at it at an individual basis. So we'll keep going that way for it. The monthly reports that we put out financially actually show the project balance of each and every project that's out there. One of the things you do, just so you know, when we started looking this year, we've basically only gotten three data points of revenue for this calendar year. And that's the monthly check for January, which actually applies back to twenty nineteen, the monthly check for February, which stays in the here, the monthly check for March. I'm not sure, well, April hasn't closed, so I haven't seen that number. So we've earned about, maybe about one million when we start looking at it, and spent about one point two. And given the way capital projects go with rollover funding, that's, that's kind of the norm for it. But what we're doing is every single time we look through it, when the books close, and also during the, during the month, basically, between, and I, again, I go back, Linda and Michael do an incredible job of trying to keep track of this throughout, throughout the year. They start looking at, can we do it this way? What happened was, this is the budget that the council approved, and back to what the mayor was saying about, they've already gone through and prioritized, which this was what was twenty. What you see before you is staff's recommendation where, if you have to make one point seven million of cuts, and this is twenty-five percent, it is a big share. This is what you could do, and it, it would fit into things that are happening, like Michael was saying about utility relocates. We know it's going to delay it, so we aren't going to appropriate it for this year. It would still allow the groundwork to go on and still allow it to happen up as long as, you know, we look into twenty twenty-one. Now, again, once we get to two or three months of collections in here, if we're even, if we're pacing below the seventy-five percent mark, then all things nationwide are going to be in a totally different picture than what we're seeing at the moment. So that's kind of where SPOS falls, is you got in front of you a recommendation that we as staff say, we can see we need to make decisions, and this is decisions which will allow it to be managed, so that projects that are ongoing and important can still go on, but those that we know the cash won't be spent this year, we don't have one there.
Right. Thanks, Jay, for that clarification. So um, the concept, we didn't just do a twenty-five percent across the board, because if we had done it, road resurfacing would have gone down to closer to two point three mil.
Correct. You'll, you'll never see across the board cuts if I'm standing around. That's not.
Yeah. Um, and I heard on the budget meeting that we've already spent about sixty percent, you said about of paving so far has been?
Uh, I, that may be a little bit higher right now, but yeah, it's, it's been going like gangbusters. When there's no traffic out there, trap paving can occur.
Right. Um, I'll, I'll just, this is probably more of a rhetorical question, but you know, what, what would be the danger where we were to put a pause on some of these things until we have a better picture? Um, you know, back in the two thousand nine, there were the fed, federal, uh, the feds came down with the Recovery Investment Act for the two thousand eight, um, you know, you know, financial crash, and they mostly allocated for uh, state and local governments, um, you know, for investment in infrastructure, and most of that was for paving, right? And we don't know if that's going to happen or not. We can't plan on any federal funding coming down from a infrastructure stimulus. It would be excellent if we got that from DC. But you know, they were shovel-ready projects, so um, it was mostly paving, and I, I look at the things that have to have engineering and design, that's great, we're going deep on that, but you know, paving is paving, and it can be done very simply and easily with just calling a crew out and, and doing that. Um, you know, we've spent close to sixty percent of our paging, paving budget. Again, rhetorical question, but you know, what would be the harm if we were to hold off on doing that further and, and wait till we get our, get our income, but I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Um, and I'll, I won't take up the rest of the time. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So just a point of information that we have a five-year paving budget, or five-year paving plan ready to roll. If somebody wanted to give us millions of dollars, we could find streets to pave, you know, hand over fist. So please, bring that money. I'd love to spend it.
Right. Um, and I, I did mention, I, I think we're, I, I would like to stick to the twenty-year cycle, but that's not in this conversation. I think we've accelerated that. We're probably about a seventeen-year paving cycle, but anyhow, it's all good. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Oh, okay. Um, anyone else have any questions or comments on this part?
Anyone else have any questions or comments on this part? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, Jay, I think you can continue.
Moving on to the second bucket, and I hope Britt Walker's online because I may need his help on this in a second. But I want to talk about hotel motel fund. Now, as everybody knows, hotel motels major issue is the drastic increase in available funding. Okay, we have portion of the tax which can be used for tourism product development, and that's the label to be used. And the tax was increased to handle this and build various trail systems connected and associated with the hotels in the air. Now, a mere six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, we were about to have the ball rolling about trying to back bonds with this money. And we are very good that we did not pull the trigger at that point because right now, instead of having about 800,000 for debt payment, we probably, it may be about 200,000 and most of that money has already been earned. DCBB, when we did the update a month ago, actually called me the, the same night. And we were talking about it because our numbers of decreasing hotel motel to 75% of previous year's collections is about on what they've got because they've seen January and February real numbers. And then March is of course this hybrid month. And then currently, everything is basically unoccupied at this point on that. However, we do have a silver lining in hotel motel. Tax previously collected but not spent on hotel motel is sitting there in the fund. And there's 1.1 million. And again, it's restricted. It's tourism product development, things that bring people in, things that people that visit Dunwoody can use. The state code's pretty elaborate on it, but there, there's quite a few things that it can be worked on. And what we did was we said, let's revisit hotel motel as if it's a brand new number. And the reason being, out of all the industries that may see the slowest amount, and I don't mean to be pessimistic here, but sometimes that will see the slowest rebound, hotel motel and travel may be one of those. So we're going to have to pretend or actually project that this money just next year still stays as low as it can. So that being said, much the same schedule as you saw before. The first column you see is the current 2020 budget. That's the 789,000, basically 800,000 worth of funding that we could use for this to use for the Ashford Trail development in different phases. Now, again, this is not all of it. And Michael Smith can even add into some of this later, that there's more costs associated with it. But this is what was expected out of hotel motel. Now, the next column you see, and we kind of had to put a term up here, undesigned, 1.1 million of available rollover funding. So if we take that and add in the 197,000 or so that we think we've, excuse me, that we've earned to date with the minimal amount of, of funding we get for the rest of the year, we should have about 1.3 available to spend. So what this did was it kind of under the recommended changes, just kind of goes back and forth. And what I want to do is focus on the new recommended budget. Talk, and you'll have to forgive me on this. I have to go back to notes on some of this. The final cost for Ashford Trail 1 is based off of final cost estimates and right-of-way acquisition. So it goes up to about 100,000. And the part for Ashford Trail 2, I'll let Michael Smith talk to if he's still available online. I see him there. He can explain that better than I can.
Okay. Yeah, the, the phase one, that budget there gets the, gets the project built. Hopefully this year, as soon as the mall donation, right of way donation is complete. The phase two, we have a design contract and we can continue through to final design with the money we have available. And then any money that would be left over after that would go towards starting the right of way phase. But there, this just really keeps the design moving. There's a lot more costs in the future having to do with right of way and construction.
So this keeps those projects moving. The next column you see is bait, or the next row is undesigned. And part of this is just even being more conservative than ultra-conservative on hotel motel. So basically not appropriating about 130, 140,000 worth of this funding. Now, the next three projects you see are things that council has talked about in the past or in kind of, in kind of tangential to this, and we've added one of them. The PCE demo and design bids are in, and these are the true costs with a contingency, 36 and 102,000. These are eligible projects. The next one you see is Peachtree Middle School Lighting. This was originally budgeted and you're going to see it in the third bucket of general funding for, at a cost of about 125,000. Can, all together with that, the project's a little bit higher. However, this is a project that after going through the hotel motel law is eligible because these fields are used for various things that come into town as far as travel, baseball and the like. So it's an eligible project there and the funding is sitting there. So without it, it would be one of those things that you might have to look at cutting in the general fund. In this case, we do have a pot of money that's available for it and can be used for it then. And we'll talk a little bit more about the, the movement out of the general fund in the next budget. This is hotel motel, so this still gets us to keeping Ashford moving, keeping PCE moving and adding in the Peachtree Middle School lighting. Any questions at this point? And again, pretty quick on this, but just open the floor for questions.
I'm listening for questions. Okay, so I, this is the mayor and I have a question or a concern or both. The PCMS lighting is not for the baseball fields, correct? It's for the multipurpose field? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. And so I think that at some point, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I think council needs to have a discussion about whether or not, given the restriction in funds we're going to face, maybe not even just this year with hotel motel, but next year as well, that whether or not that's an appropriate use of hotel motel tax dollars as well as an appropriate project for us to spend money on right now. I know that it makes a difference in how those fields can be used, but I am concerned that, that we need to know what all our choices are for hotel motel tax dollars. So anyhow, I don't know what Eric, when the appropriate time is to have that discussion. I expect it's not tonight, but go ahead and let me know that, please.
We will, we'll work on that, Mayor. I'll get with the staff and we'll, we'll come up with a time and a way to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Just put it on an agenda down the road, I think. Thank you.
Any other questions on hotel?
No, go ahead.
I was going to move on to general fund if there's no more questions on hotel motel. A general funding project, and this is one that, that's, that's going to be very simple and very quick. These projects are funded through general funded capital generally, and they can be moved around at will with mayor and council approval. The flip side is that we don't have very many projects that are tied to this. So what we kind of do is just kind of show this is the next one. For the 2020 budget, there was the PCMS lighting at 125, the PCMS field house at 150 and various IT equipment at 200,000, most of which has already been bought. There's a few little rollovers with the Dunwoody Village and the Arts Master Plan that need to be referenced. And as you see in here, what we did was the PCMS lighting in this version recommended, again, it can be subject for discussion because this is just a recommendation, is decreased by the 125 paid for out of hotel motel. And then the funding in here is split differently. What we're doing is 112,000 for the PCMS field house and possibly 38,000 that's undesigned at this time, along with 125,000 being done for water renovations. So do you with the restroom and all the other facilities around there? The 38,000, we probably would recommend in the end being moved to that 125. But in essence, decreasing the field house a little bit and moving the lighting from hotel motel to help with the water for renovations for this year. Again, that's general funded, did the recommendation that's on the table, questions about that? And I think Brent can talk a little bit more about the renovations themselves if needed.
I'm here. I can answer any questions, Council Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions? Comments, concerns? All right, I don't hear anything.
Okay, um, we'll move on. Okay, the next part we want to do is a little bit of the update on the annual budgeting part that we did a month ago and start talking a little bit about it. And some of this is also to help the citizens out on understanding the health of Dunwoody right now financially. And also I want to start talking a little bit about tax anticipation notices. Or you've all heard them called TANS all the time. Out of all good things, you, you try to work with stuff, the, our financial advising firm, PFM, who we had started to work with on hotel motel, also will work with us on a TAN if need be. And I'll start, I'll bury the lead or begin with the lead, that right now between Linda and myself, we don't see the need for tax anticipation notice this year, but I do not want it to drop off the radar. Because every month we go through this, it's a new normal and we want to be ahead of the curve. So we will still start the groundwork internally on this. And part of it's going to, to, we may bring things to council every month saying, this is where we stand right now. We still don't see a need or we see a need so that when it happens, we can pull the trigger quickly. First, I want to talk about budgeting versus TANs and cash flow because they're two different worlds. Budgeting is your annual budget. So you start with your fund balance at the beginning of the year. How much you got in your checkbook on January 1? Add in your revenues, take away your expenditures and what you've got is your ending fund balance. Now, city policy has that the ending fund balance to the year is to be in the general fund between four and six months of budgeted expenditure. The city has done an incredibly good job of keeping it at the high end of the scale. Let me say how this differs from cash flow. During certain times of the year, we spend more than we earn. As of today, April 22nd, I'm sure that we have spent more than we've earned because when we start at January and go down, we go down to about the August, September timeframe. I think Council Enigan said it to the best. We just kind of spend until we get there and then it goes back up when we get property tax collections in. We see that still happening this year. We still think we will have enough to keep cash flows active. So even though we might get below the four-month reserve, the reserve is actually for the year-end number, not the during the year number. I just want to make sure everybody and the citizens themselves understand the difference between those two. We've got a fund balance and then we've got actual cash flows on it. Now, pre-COVID, the city was reviewing and estimating starting balance for 2020 in conjunction with the process of closing the books. There is a whole lot of, no matter how organized you can get, there's always going to be a bill that you go, oh, that should be paid last year, this year. We started looking at it and right before this happened, the finance department and myself were, were pretty sure that we were going to have above six months of fund balance, which is above the amount recommended by policy, four to six months. Now, normally in a situation where this would happen and we thought it might be in the, in the seven or a little bit over seven months, we would, our council advising, advising you that there's this much above the balance and then action needs to be taken on it. Now, in a normal, non-pandemic world, capital needs are exactly where this should go. You have money above the, the threshold of six months, so you would appropriate it that way. However, given that today is a different type of new normal, we're showing that there's probably a different way to use this above, above the six months fund balance. And that's what I want to show in the next. What you've got on this slide is basically three scenarios and they're going from left to right, perfect world and then two different scenarios. Now, in a perfect world, we thought for discussion purposes, we would have about 16.8 million. If we earned exactly 100%, that's 25.7, and spent exactly 100% of the budget, 25.7 and still had the 16.8, based off the 2020 budget, it would be 7.8 months of fund balance. So the difference of that, we could figure out, could be appropriated. However, I want to show you scenarios one and two. Now, you saw in the sales tax part, we went down to 25% decrease. I'm showing it even more conservative here, but also remember it's a different tax base. This is property, business license permitting and court files. In these, I'm showing a 30% decrease in total revenue, which from last month was the most conservative scenario there. So in both of these, scenario one and two, we show 18 million of revenue. The difference in scenario one, I decreased spending to 95% of expenditure. In scenario two, we're showing decrease to 90% of expenditure. Right now, the, and it will show it in the next slide, staff has already identified about three and a half, as I call it, the easy things to pull back and not spend on. That's without much pressure and also more importantly, without reducing, reducing services to the citizen. What we've said is, we've kind of said, it wouldn't be a material decrease. It would be something where we might do something a little bit slower, a little bit less efficient than we would, but we would still get it done. Now, if we go under scenario one, which is the 95% expenditure rate and 30% decrease in revenue, at the end of 2020, the city would have still over four months of fund balance. And I will have to say, if you went to any rating agency right now on, in New York and said, we still have a plan to keep us at four months of fund balance by the end of this year, they would consider that the best planning that has ever happened. I mean, it is perfect, happens down here, but it can be worked that way. If we decrease even farther, and I'm not advocating it at this point, but if we only spent 90%, we would still almost be at the max of our funding for this. Why bring this up? Because what happens throughout the course of this year is every month, department heads are going to go through the budget each time as new revenue figures come in and see if we need to get to that 95% mark, to see if we get to that 90% mark. But in the way we've got it structured, even if we got to 90%, which would show some reduction in services to people, we would be at the high end of our fund. Okay, that's kind of a 101 on fund balance. Any questions at this point on that?
Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Moving on, this is what I was talking about just a second ago. Staff already went through and every single department head went through at literally the line item level of their budget on possible reductions. And I like to call them expenditure controls at this point because these are instances where department heads are the ones that sign off on the invoice, that sign off and say, this is okay to pay, or start the ball rolling by entering into the contract. Just from the exercise two or three weeks ago, departments were able to find almost 3.5% worth of the budget that they can just stop now. In some cases, they're, they're a little bit different. Parks already had received some lower bids on some operational things. They know some program cancellations that are going to come through. So that was about 200,000. Public Works has a slight reduction to the operating repair and maintenance efforts. And this is one where we like to use the term minimal service level reduction. In other words, we can spend a little bit less, we might get to it a little bit slower, but it's not going to materially affect the way things are going. There's $100,000 elimination, the budgeted contingency, that's just off the plate to begin with. The police department even went through, there's less travel that they have to go through right now, training and the like. The elimination of the city hall sinking fund payment. And I want to specifically explain this one. In that case, every year, we've taken about 10% of what we owe in debt on city hall and put it in a sinking fund and we've got about 100,000 in there right now. What this does is just says for 2020, we don't need to make that sinking fund payment. We are not legally obligated to make it. So it's one of those cases where we can crawl it back and not spend it and keep the general fund flush. Part of that is thinking because your debt payment, your balloon payment isn't for another decade. So in that case, you don't need the money, then you need the money now. Also, some simple things, like we're looking at, we're going to eliminate the print edition of the Dunwoody Digest. We can still put it out online. It's still widely read. It's also one of those things, I think somebody mentioned it in the budget committee when we were talking about it, was it's out there to highlight the programs we have. And right now, the programs we have are a little bit reduced because of the pandemic. And then there's about 200,000 in all other departments. So this gets us to about a 3.3% decrease right now with minimal effort. And again, Eric, all the department heads, myself are all looking through this on, on a, basically a daily basis. When bills come through, they're, three or four people will touch them before they're actually started on. So we can have a good control of this and plan to come back to council regularly with changes on this. This process will continue throughout the state of emergency and we may have to increase it as better revenue figures come in or pull it back. We'll keep an eye on that. Also need to note that there may be some increases to some extent due to the pandemic. There may be some safety efforts, just when we just generally do things. For instance, when we reopen city hall to the public, there'll be additional things we do for safety protocol. So there may be some more spending with that. And also, IT is one of the budgets that we did not reduce anything with in this budget. We definitely see the need to keep our staff working remotely for a longer period of time than would be normal. So we're going to bring back to y'all probably at mid-year, things to help shore that up throughout, throughout 2020. Any questions on operating at this point?
Anyone have any questions or comments? Budget committee members, anything to add?
I'd just like to thank Jay for his and staff's due diligence and the whole budget aspect. Much appreciated.
Yes, thank you for taking the time to explain it to our citizens at this meeting. Thank you, Jay. Hey, Michael.
So I expect that we will spend a lot more time talking about this as the year goes or as the spring goes on. Do you need anything additional from us tonight, Jay?
At this point, no, I do not. Thank you, though.
Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you. Next, uh, Cecil McLendon, our city attorney with a brief update about the state emergency regulations.
Yes. Mayor Council, I was asked to give just a brief update this evening regarding the, the current status of the governor's executive orders as it relates to the state of emergency. Um, I'm going to focus on the April 23rd amendment, which was basically a pulling back of a lot of the, uh, regulations, the closure for close contact businesses, um, pulling back the closure requirements and putting in place the requirements under which they would need to meet to, to begin, uh, reopening and, uh, expanding the services of those businesses. So the governor's order comes in, the, uh, it is active through May 13th at 11:30, 11:59 PM. Um, first, it comes in and basically says that everyone should continue, continue social distancing, the six foot separation, encouraging everyone to wear face coverings. Um, and basically saying there should not be gatherings of 10 people in locations that, 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 the, the space will not allow those persons to maintain the social distancing. Uh, the order goes through and discusses critical infrastructure, which I think we, we've looked at. It incorporates, as our order did, the homeland security rules, as well as, uh, some specific areas that those businesses are very, uh, considered, uh, very important to deliver services. And then essential services are what, um, people can do, even under the shelter in place, what you can do, uh, and be consistent with the orders, such as obtaining necessary supplies, services for your family, um, essential activities for health safety, uh, uh, obtaining medical behavioral, uh, or other emergency medical services. So these are things we've looked at and we can go through it and you can ask any questions. I want to sort of move quickly because I think this ground has been covered, not only here, but sort of in the larger picture as well. Um, so in the order, the shelter in place provisions do, uh, survive. And under the shelter in place, it's specifically aimed at people who would be, um, sort of at a higher risk as a result of the COVID-19. Uh, persons over 65 in nursing homes or, uh, inpatient hospice situations, uh, with pre-existing conditions such as lung conditions, asthma, heart conditions, uh, uh, immunocompromised, et cetera. So it states in essence, these, these groups of people need to continue to shelter in place. Um, but it does state that sheltering in place does contemplate that you would be able to participate in essential services, getting things you need, unnecessary travel, traveling back and forth to essential services or traveling back and forth to, uh, working in a business, doing minimum necessary activities, which remember that's keeping the business open, or working in a critical infrastructure position. Um, finally, on the shelter in places, it's very significant or it's, uh, the order lays out that you shouldn't take visitors. And I think those provisions are more directed towards nursing homes and situations where that would be very susceptible to the larger population of visitors came in. That's, uh, the shelter in place remains in place. Um, the next section, this is I think where it sort of the, became more, um, more visibility on it is talking about restaurants and dining services. So previously, there was, uh, no in, in dining room dining allowed. So this order, uh, relaxes those restrictions and basically says, uh, there can be 10 persons in the dining area for each 500 square feet of face, uh, space in that dining area. It does include waiting in bar areas, but you can't calculate the hallways and bathrooms, et cetera. Um, so you can look at your dining area and determine the number of allowable, uh, patrons you can have in the dining area. At that point, the, the order sets out rules. And throughout this order, you'll see depending upon the type of business, the rules are either mandatory being shall, or in cases where it may be a more critical business, a lot of the rules are may, such as an example would be whether you could get, uh, hand sanitizer. For some businesses, if you can't get it, you can't open. For others, since it's a critical business, they would say you still, you should do that, but it's not a mandatory requirement. For the restaurants, um, these are mandatory requirements. And again, the list, I can read through it, but let me sort of summarize. And if anybody wants me to read or, or ask any specific questions, that's fine. Um, first thing, and this is sort of the first one on all of these you'll see, which is screen and evaluate workers for signs of illness as, such as a fever, over 100.4 degrees, cough or shortness of breath. Um, do not allow people exhibiting those symptoms to report to work. Uh, again, try to use teleworking, staggered shifts, virtual meetings, uh, to minimize the in-person. Um, frequent hand washing. So this list has 30 things on it, which I'd be happy to read all of them. I think a lot of them have already been covered, uh, in the press as well. I think importantly, one is the salad bars and communal food areas must be closed. Um, there are no drinks, that you can't serve yourself drinks, et cetera. Um, also requires the sanitation and the, the kitchen staff to be, um, uh, their situation to be set up to minimize contact, et cetera. Uh, playgrounds have to be closed, et cetera. That's restaurants. But again, there are 39 requirements. You can summarize them to say they're all designed to minimize the contact and the ability for, you know, the, the potential that people are eating and it would, would cross communicate. The one other one that I would point out is if you have your booth, redesign the booth to provide space. That's the restaurants. Um, for businesses that are critical infrastructure, these are businesses that would be food, uh, uh, electricity, utilities, food, uh, preparation, um, things of those nature. Again, many of the same restrictions on there. There are 17 on that. Now, with critical infrastructure, however, it states that they may do that. And I think the presumption there is that if you're critical infrastructure, we need the business to be open. So again, it starts with monitor for the 100.4 degrees. If somebody's ill, don't allow them to report. Disinfect areas, hand washing. Uh, for instance, it talks about registers should be six feet apart. Throughout this, you'll see where there are stations people are working. But it's a distant requirement and if you can't, it may say you have to use every other station to maintain a distance requirement. Um, so for critical infrastructure, those things, they may implement those. It's a suggestion, but for non-critical infrastructure, this would be businesses doing essential minimum services. It is shall. So if you're not a critical infrastructure, but non-critical, then you have to do this in order to be able to open. And again, that list for non-critical is 21 items. Starts with monitor for fever over 104, 100.4 degrees. Uh, do not allow people to come in, employees to come in who are sick. Uh, if it's a retail business, you have to post a sign about not coming in if you're sick. Um, requiring hand washing. You know, when the, when the employees are on their breaks, how they maintain distance and stagger those shifts, stagger breaks, uh, let them eat outside. Uh, these are all things again, that are designed to, uh, to minimize contact, high traffic areas. One is if you have pin pads, limit the use of pin pads for access because that's somewhere that people would touch over and over. Uh, as to all businesses, it says that they should provide personal protective equipment as available. Um, disinfectant and sanitation products for workers to clean workspace and equipment and just increase physical space to six feet. Uh, next section moves into retail businesses, including food grocery establishments. Um, there it is, these are mandatory, they shall. And its first one is limit the number of patient, patrons inside the store to 50% of the fire capacity occupancy. 50% of fire capacity occupancy for eight patrons per 1,000 square feet. Encourage hand sanitizer, encourage non-cash payments. Um, sanitizing doors three times a day. So this is for all, uh, retail that, and it is a mandatory requirement. There are seven requirements there. It goes on further for retail food establishments, which again would be the critical infrastructure. So it also adds a list of what grocery stores may do as an encouragement, but they would remain open if it was not feasible. Um, one is scheduling hours of operation for vulnerable populations to shop without, uh, to shop. Um, reducing the store hours to allow additional cleaning, increasing social distancing, uh, um, guidelines such as tape on the floor. Putting in areas people walk so you can maintain the social distancing. Provide, uh, personal protective equipment. Again, there are 13 requirements there. And with grocery stores, those are suggested, but in the event something was not feasible, they are allowed to open. Uh, the next area is gyms and gyms and fitness centers. And again, this is a shall. So in order to open, these requirements must be met. There are 16 requirements. Uh, signage that they can't enter if they have been diagnosed with COVID-19. Um, enhanced sanitation procedures, limiting occupancy, uh, including hand sanitizer stations, sanitation wipes during common area of machinery that's used. There are no, uh, no provisions for group classes, that, that any group classes would have to be halted as well as any in-facility childcare services. Um, if you have basketball courts, pools, other group sports areas, those have to be closed. Limit locker rooms and requiring the workers to sanitize those areas, uh, throughout the open hours of the day. Gyms. Um, the next area is the hairstylist, um, massage therapy, uh, body art studios. And again, these are mandatory requirements. There are 13 of them. And again, they sort of, these are a little different from the standpoint that since it is a individual service, they, the rules, uh, the rules mitigate towards only having one person in at that time without anyone waiting. So it's saying provide by, services by appointments only. Have sand, hand wash sanitation when people come in. Signs at the entry, a warning about COVID. Uh, one person per provider at a time, if it's a minor child, a parent can come with them and wait. Uh, patrons could wait in the cars. And you either use every other workstation or unless they are at least 10 feet apart. Stagger schedules, wear PPE. Again, these are the requirements to be able to, uh, to reopen those, uh, those services. Next area, movie theaters. Again, it's about seating. It's about, there are eight requirements, seating, uh, distancing and sanitation, marking off so people stay apart when they're in line. Bowling alleys, similar situation. Jumping lanes so people aren't close, common areas with balls, making sure they're sanitized after each use, et cetera. Outdoor activities, landscaping, only social distancing and some training, uh, training of, uh, employees. Uh, it does allow for shareholder meetings under Georgia law to be handled via teleconference, which generally they would be in person under law. It cites the, the national rules on dental care, optometry and opticians and with surgeons, uh, inpatient surgeons. It talks about how the, uh, again, that is a may, but it talks about how you would monitor the patients, monitor people, people coming in as well as, uh, for prioritizing. And it talks about childcare and this is mandatory. And it talks about only, uh, only bringing children to and from the, the facility. Um, and very much that is 13 requirements that are really all about sanitation, uh, talking about toys and watching how they're being used, um, washing any bedding and clothing and dishes. So again, that is, uh, um, highly focused on making sure there's no cross-contamination. Um, with cities and municipal governments, it has delayed a lot of reporting requirements. Um, as in the other ordinances, it states that the city cannot require any, uh, local ordinance that is inconsistent with the terms of this ordinance. And hasn't written about driver's test, in-person driver's test and how you would handle that. Where people can get, uh, get their license and allows for local enforcement. So that was, hope that wasn't too much and it was sort of hard because there are a lot of specifics. But if you read the order, which is online, it's really just sort of a list of rules. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? John, your hand's been up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Cecil, thank you for the, I have two questions. One is you already mentioned the fact that, uh, the governor has preempted all city, uh, rules and regulations that go beyond or lessen any rules that the governor's put in place. Can you just confirm that?
I'm sorry, you broke up right at me in there.
Preemption by, uh, the governor to stop cities from doing anything different or allowing anything different than the governor's already put in place.
It absolutely by its terms states that, yes.
Okay. And then the other one is enforcement. Explain to me how there's a lot of rules and regulations to open a restaurant, to do various things. Is it the responsibility of the city of Dunwoody to enforce any of these rules or regulations? Do we have the authority to, who has the primary jurisdiction and how does that work?
Under the law with the emergency orders of the governor, we do have the authority to enforce it and it expressly gives us the authority in the order. Um, I do not know that it is a affirmative requirement that we would go. I think it would be just considered like anything else that's out there. Um, that is a law on the books and we would enforce it in the ordinary course of how we enforce, uh, all laws that are on the books.
Right. If I remember seeing, I think the first paragraph says that the enforcement falls back to the state. And then after that, it might allow us to do further enforcement ourselves, but I think the state is the primary jurisdiction.
It is, it is a state order and the laws and the, if you violate it, it's a misdemeanor, which means that it is from the state, yes.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on those two points. Thank you very much. I appreciate the assistance.
Anybody else? Joe?
Just Cecil for clarification, uh, there's section Roman numeral, um, it's a county and municipal governments, basically just looks like they're giving us a, a extension of reporting deadlines. Um, is there any impact to our city operations, Eric or, or Cecil on that? Is that, is that a good thing? Good with those section, that section?
I, I think that's an incorrect interpretation. What they're doing is sort of pushing back the timelines based upon the, the length of this. As far as operationally, I defer to Eric or Jay on that.
Hey, this is Jay. Uh, just to let you know, some of those deadlines have already been extended administratively. So this, nothing but helpless and codified, so it's fine.
Yeah, and I, I concur with all that and we've all been in contact. Uh, staff has with any kind of dates and what the state's been imposing or assisting with. And we're trying to relay any of those to the public where they apply.
And, and just to dovetail with what John mentioned, in that section on section eight, um, at the very end of page 23, under says, it is further ordered. There's a lot of it is further. It always says it is further in order. It's this. There's a paragraph, for the purpose of this provision, orders, rules and regulations that are promulgated by county municipal governments that are more or less restrictive than the terms of this order shall be considered inconsistent with this order. So, um, that is really, you know, what, what we're saying is that local, local governments, if, if there's any sub, basically saying to the layperson, if there's anything that's covered in this order, subject matter, hands off, uh, at the county and municipal side, right?
That is my answer where I say this order asserts that authority. That is where it is asserting it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Lynn, I have a question.
Okay.
And this goes back to John's question on enforcement. So what is it going to look like in the city of Dunwoody? Are we, and I guess to Eric, what are we going to ask our city staff and police to do? Or are we going to ask the state to come in?
We have our, um, you know, I'm in contact with the chief on this as well as far as how we'll enforce the orders. You know, if it's all complaint, uh, driven for the most part, the way it's done. One thing I want to point to and Cecil did an excellent job going over everything. But there's also the GMA did an excellent job on the major points from, it's titled major points from Kemp's, four twenty-three executive order. And it does go through in more layman's terms in terms of the, um, how the ordinance or how his order, I should say, um, is dictated. But to answer your question, yes, I mean, you know, the chief is ready, his staff is ready to take a look at things. It's going to be a, um, you know, we're going to proceed slowly in terms of how everybody reemerges from this, but we will watch over the businesses. We have, we'd received a few complaints prior to this order, people operating, and we did address those. Most people, once it's addressed, they come into compliance immediately.
Anybody else? So Eric or chief, I think you might be on the call, um, or Cecil. As I read the order, if, if law enforcement, whether it's city or state gets involved, the first step is a warning and education, correct?
That's correct from my standpoint. The chief, chief warned here now.
In the, go ahead, chief.
So yes, uh, we would continue doing what we've been doing, which is giving people a warning and trying to educate them on the particular rules. We've not had really any problems in gaining compliance from anyone that we've spoken to. We anticipate that'll be the case moving forward. Because of the different businesses that are probably going to start opening up in some way, shape or form, uh, based on the governor's order, we will likely start receiving more calls is what I anticipate. And we're instructed, our staff on the, the way we're going to handle those, which is go in whatever the complaint is and try to address it, uh, the way that we've been doing. And again, I don't anticipate there'll be any problems, but based on the order, in order of, say if a business repeatedly, um, uh, was breaking the rules, it does allow for after two citations are issued, uh, that the business could be closed. But it has that restriction in there that two citations have to be issued first and then the business could be closed.
And chief, I think y'all, Jennifer, uh, our communications department developed information for all the businesses that were impacted by this order and your officers did distribute or will distribute that. I'm not sure where we are with that.
Mayor, you're correct. We're in the, uh, Jennifer and her staff did that and we're in the process of delivering those. And we've got the Excel sheet with all the businesses and so we're going line by line and delivering those to the businesses. Some probably are still closed and, you know, won't be open, but the ones that are open, we're delivering those.
That's excellent customer service. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, I asked, as I did in my message through, uh, Facebook and the D News last week, that people give our businesses the space and the grace to figure out what this new world means for them. Let's try hard to give everyone the benefit of the doubt as we go through this process. Thank you. Anybody else for Cecil? Okay. Sharon?
Yes, mayor. A moment, get caught up with you here. Brook Run Park improvements update, Eric Johnson.
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. Glad you can hear me. Um, we're pulling up our slideshow here real quick. We'll get started, give you a quick update, uh, on Brook Run. I was out there again today and it, it looks great. Grass is growing really well. Um, so let's get into it. We have a, um, couple of pictures we wanted to share with you right off the bat on the second slide. Uh, the great lawn looks great. Parking lot across the street, um, is going really well too. Um, they were out there today actually, uh, installing the, um, speed pump between the parking lot and the great lawn today. So that'll get put in place, uh, probably tomorrow, finished up. Amphitheater looks great. Uh, there you see the large pavilion. And next slide, the multi-use fields, uh, which will be the last of what we'll cover in the schedule, uh, which will be the last areas that will get completed. Next slide, um, as you know, there's been a good bit of issues out there on the job site. First and foremost is the erosion control issues. Wanted to kind of give you a, uh, an idea. Reeve Young has a third-party testing for the MPDES, which is stormwater management. Uh, they are complete site services. They've done over one hundred inspections on the project. Uh, the city obviously has Clark Patterson Lee. They've done over eighty inspections. And we CPS, we had another third party, uh, go out there, Geo Hydro, that did a report for us, uh, a review of the site for MPDES. So as you all, uh, know well, uh, Clark Patterson Lee, who does your third-party inspections, they come out and if they find an issue, um, issue is recorded, reported, given to the contractor and they've got seven days, uh, calendar days to fix any issue. If they're not, for whatever reason, if they're not fixed and brought into compliance, uh, a stop work order is issued. Uh, this has occurred two times on the project. One time early, uh, at the beginning of the project, we had a, uh, overflow on a silt fence, uh, that was remedied pretty quickly and work continued. The second one was February seventeenth of two thousand twenty. Uh, the issue there was Reeve Young could not get, there would have been more damage done if they went in there to fix the issue, uh, prior to letting it dry out and get in there and fix it. Clark Patterson Lee was on site. Uh, they agreed with, uh, the recommendation from Reeve Young, but an issue, uh, the stop work order, uh, was issued due to the ordinance. Another, uh, at, at some point in time, Georgia EPD on, well, there was a lot of reports and Georgia EPD came on site on March third. They issued, all of us were out there with them. Uh, the, the report was issued on March fourteenth. All work has been corrected with Reeve Young sending a response to Clark Patterson Lee, who is dealing with Georgia EPD, uh, alone. Patrick with Georgia EPD is discussing, uh, the issues with Rich Edinger. And we feel like it is in compliance, uh, at this, at this moment. The last inspection was done last Friday, the twenty-fourth, with only, only one issue being, um, recorded and that was mud that is in the little, um, uh, uh, swale going from the great lawn to the multi-use fields where those two big, um, curb inlets are. Uh, and that was cleaned up on the same day. Um, so as of present, there are no issues with erosion control. Uh, weather, uh, there's been a lot of it. Uh, there's been at least three months worth of delays due to excessive rain, um, unsuitable soils. The, uh, we, we've reported on this before, the gray beams, the piles, uh, the abatement of the asbestos piping in the amphitheater area, uh, unsuitable soils in the multi-use field, the soil cement that we've had to use in the soil, in the multi-use field, uh, and unsuitable soils in the parking lot. So we've dealt with all of those issues. And COVID nineteen, there's been, since it started, a twenty-five percent reduction in staff for Reeve Young. So those are kind of the big issues, uh, that we, we have overcome all of these. The next slide is budget. Uh, having said all of this, uh, the budget still remains the same as we presented last time and we do not expect this to, um, be increased whatsoever. It's still the seven million, seven ninety-six, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. So all of these areas, all the, um, issues we've dealt with, uh, we still are remaining to stay within budget. Overall budget for the project. With respect to schedule, um, the original date that was given for completion was the end of December of two thousand nineteen. As you can see there, the, um, punch and clean, which, you know, will get substantial completion for will be May thirteenth, two thousand twenty above. You'll see the, the great lawn in Banshee, the fourth. Roadway off of Barclay, the fourth, uh, multi-use fields, the seventh, parking lots and buildings, um, the seventh, great lawn pavilion, the thirteenth, and the multi-use fields and concession stand, the thirteenth. So I, I would tell you, it's been a, uh, quite a struggle out there with the weather and the unsuitable, um, issues we've dealt with. But all in all, we feel it's, it's, it's just been a tremendously successful project uh, as it relates to the quality and the product that Dunwoody is going to have. I think everybody's worked together the best they can. I know we've had some erosion control issues. But I feel like collectively, we have all met and dealt with those, um, to the best, um, interest of Dunwoody. And I just think you, you're just going to have an extremely well-received project out there. Uh, there is, um, two areas out there with grass. They're going to finish up grassing, sodding all the areas around the multi-use fields. And then they're going to jump back over the road and sod the upper part of the great lawn instead of seeding it and also where we had extra dirt where we mounted over in that playfield, we're going to sod that as well. So with that, uh, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right. So who, if you have questions, you're just going to have, uh...
This is John. I have one quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you tell me a little bit about the, uh, multi-use fields? When do the fences get installed?
All that work will be done by the thirteenth of, um, of May.
Okay.
So with it, yeah, between now and the thirteenth. Yes, sir. By the way, John, I like your Chicago background.
Thank you. I actually took that picture, top of the John Hancock building.
I'm from Chicago too, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, this is Tom. I have, uh, just two quick questions. Eric, in the, in the, uh, the report, the progress update report from the, uh, the twentieth, uh, that was sent to us, uh, there was, there was a, a, a page in that that said cul-de-sac, uh, cul-de-sac redesign, the turnaround. Was there any significant change to plan there? What exactly was the redesign? And could you just give me a little explanation on that?
Um, I think Mike, Mike, are you on the line? Mike Izzie?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mike, can you kind of go into that? I'm, I'm not as familiar with that as you and Jalen are.
Yeah, sure. This is Mike Izzie with Reeve Young. Uh, basically where the existing, where the cul-de-sac was going to be, there was a lot of unsuitable soils. So we decided to pull the cul-de-sac back a little bit to avoid some of those soils that were next to that pond, which was a significant cost savings on the project. We didn't spend any money because we pulled it back, but there was no significant redesign in that area.
Okay. And did that affect in any way the, uh, the detention pond that was over in that area?
No, it did not.
Okay, thank you. Um, this, the second question is, um, uh, the, uh, the disc golf. Is, is that being done after significant completion or is there any progress on that at, at this point?
It will be done after substantial completion. When we see all the trees grow in, we'll have a better chance to cut them down where we need to. Not, um, when I say trees, I mean trees, I mean branches. We'll go in there and we'll trim some things out.
Limb, limbing some trees.
Yeah, limbing some trees and that's it. But as the trees grow and, uh, we'll be able to see where we need to place everything a little better. We'll get that done.
Given, uh, as long as there aren't any unexpected delays, what, do you have any anticipated, uh, time when that part of the project may be complete?
Uh, most likely by the end of June.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have now.
Lynn, Stacy, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Eric, I was out there today and, um, actually looked at the great lawn and it looked as nice as it did in the picture. But my question is one I know that most of the citizens of Dunwoody are wondering as well. Like when it's done on May thirteenth, do kids get to go out and play in that great lawn? When do they get to soccer?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, great lawn, well, soccer, you'd probably go down to the soccer to multi-use fields, but...
Well, yes. When, when do they get to do that? When do they get to play in the great lawn?
Um, that's a great question. Um, we'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure how long. It just got, it just got put down, gosh, maybe a month ago, right, Mike? And it takes a little bit of time for it to kind of get put in place. So we'll have to, do you have a good answer for that, Mike?
Typically you want the roots to grow in on the grass before you have any significant traffic on there. Minor traffic is okay right now, but you'll most likely want to wait until sometime in June when the temperatures get hotter around ninety degrees or so, when those roots really start growing to have any significant traffic. It doesn't mean that you can't have somebody on there throwing a frisbee right now, but you don't want a mass amount of traffic on there until that time.
What kind of, what kind of warranty or how will they view that, uh, Mike, when the folks are out there playing on it? Uh, how, how do we want to handle that? Between now and June.
I think that's a good question for Bren, if he's on the line as well.
Yeah, I'm here. So hopefully a lot of the sod will be going in in the next couple of weeks, which will allow for it to start to root down. And so by the time that Reeve Young is, is, um, pulling down their construction fence and cleaning site and getting out of there, most of the sod should be in for a few weeks at that time. And myself and the maintenance crews will go out there and check, uh, to see how it's growing in. We think it's appropriate to open it up for free play. We'll do that. Like the center lawn, uh, the one in front of the pavilion right now, it's been in for a few weeks already. I think it's getting really close to being able to allow for, for, uh, some activity on it. But some areas, um, the east of that, uh, and then possibly what we're calling the peach field, which is the open playfield behind it, we'll get started later. So we'll put up some temporary construction fence around those areas to keep people off of it until it has a chance to root in. But right now, because of the, uh, COVID pandemic, we're not doing any organized play anyway for the foreseeable future. So what people have been doing out in the park as far as self-guided free play, I think would be appropriate, uh, in that center lawn area. Once Reeve Young picks their fence down and gets, gets out of the project site.
Great. And the multi-use fields, once they're done, they can be open for play.
That's correct. There, we were out there today doing a walkthrough and you, the supporting facilities around it were ready. You could go out there today and play on them.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you. I'm done, Lynn.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much, Eric.
Hey, thank you, mayor.
Mayor, the next item is the consent agenda, which is approval of the April thirteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting minutes.
Anybody have any questions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I could use a motion, please.
Move to pass the consent agenda.
And a second?
Okay.
Okay. A move by Jim, second by Stacy. Any other discussion? Seeing none, um, show, uh, a call for you to raise your hand if you're in favor. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Sharon?
Moving on to business items, contract award for the city of Dunwoody Parks and Recreation signage, Brett Walker.
Evening, mayor and council. Glad to see everybody's face. It's good to see some fresh faces after being stuck with just the three at home for a while. Um, the first item I have for y'all tonight is our sign package. The bid package is attached to your agenda and a lot of you have seen these signs before. This is our new entryway signage and kiosk for the parks. It's been a long time coming. Uh, we've needed to replace a lot of the old, the cap county signs for a while. The, the sign design cues are taken from the trail signage that has been up for a couple of years, been well-received. Scott Design did those, so we reached back out to them to kind of formalize some additional park entryway signs. The information kiosks, I mentioned, and then some smaller, what we're calling the puck signs, which are for the smaller park facilities and also for exit entry, uh, for addresses, things like that. So, um, the bids came in, Hilton Displays was a low bid at one forty-six, two oh seven. So we're requesting a contract award for one sixty-eight, thirty, which includes a ten percent contingency, which we don't really expect, uh, anything to come out of the contingency budget. Uh, this will be funded through the parks operations budget. We've, uh, earmarked some funds in our supply of money for new park signage, uh, for this year's budget. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions y'all may have.
Does anyone have any questions? John?
Thank you, Lynn. Um, a couple of points. Uh, Michael, as far as the signs, is there any electrical built into them at all? Is there any lighting? Is there any um any lighting at all underneath the signs?
So there there is not in this sign package. What we would do is put conduit underneath the footing. Uh, so that way, in the future, we would have our electricians run wire and be able to pull electrical wire underneath the footing at that point to put lights on both sides of the sun.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking of the uh pillars with the informational signs and the maps and things like that. I just I wasn't sure what the thoughts were on some of those items. Um, next question really goes to the uh sign, the informational sign at the back of Brook Run on Barclay, which includes uh country gardens. Do we have a contractual obligation to include that sign?
We do. It was part of the easement agreement that they gave us to use their road uh for the new access into the back of the park. Was that we would provide a sign.
And are they going to then be allowed to keep their big sign that's also right there at the entrance? Or how does that work?
Yes, um, we're still in discussion with them on that. What I'm hoping to do is revisit that. It might be a call savings to us where we can just re-placard the monument sign they have there. Uh, and maybe able to pull that puck sign out of the bid. Uh, so that would save us some money. Um, since they have the monument there, uh, it makes sense to try to reuse that that structure.
All right, final question. I was looking at the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center and I saw that the Handweavers uh got top billing on that sign. Is that uh is that the intention is to have the Hand Handweavers uh get top billing? Or is there a philosophy or way in which you're going to list the Spruill Arts Center or the uh stage door players? Or how how does that work? It's a minor thing, but.
I I think we went alphabetical. I'll have to look. I think we just went alphabetical with it. Um, honestly, I'd I'd have to look at it again. I've I've looked at these so many times, I can't remember what order they were in.
Yeah, it just shows the Handweavers Guild at the top. I just thought it was a based on space usage amount. I I thought it was uh interesting to see that they were listed at the top.
Yeah, yeah, no, there was. I don't think we put that much thought into it.
All right, sir. That's the only questions I had on the actual signage. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Questions?
Lynn, I have a question.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, Brett, I noticed that uh Waterford Park is not on there on here. I mean, I know we just got it. But is it gonna cost us more to then do them do that area as a one-off than it would be to include and and use a ten percent contingency?
It it would. I mean, we when we put this bid out um and started working on all this was before we bought Waterford Park property and knew what we were gonna do with that. So um we have the unit price for the sign we would put there. So we would ask the vendor just to honor that price for any future signage we may they want to install. So we can have some one-offs as we move forward, because there there will be some other things that come up. Um, we we got several bids uh for this. It looks like we we got about seven bid packages on this one. Uh, Hilton Displays was certainly the cheapest. And what we would try to do is just lock them into that unit price for anything going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else?
I just I just wanna think I just think it looks wonderful. I think it's great uh extending that sense of place. Um, just so excited to see this happen. So thank you guys so much. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, I need a motion, Joe.
Motion.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Pam, uh, move by Joe, second by Pam. Um, any other discussion questions? Uh, seeing none, please signify support by raising your hand. Uh, Sharon, that passes unanimously. Thank you all. Oops, I can't mute. Okay, go on.
I apologize, I was muted. The next item is contract award for the demolition of facilities at fifty perimeter center east and forty-five sixty-five Delros Court, Brett Walker.
The second item is is for the funding of the two demolition projects. Uh, we put out the bid. Uh, Wrecking Corps of America came in with a bid of eighty-three thousand dollars for both facilities. Uh, the way we did this bid is we broke them out into two separate itemized bids, one for the fifty perimeter center east. And one for uh forty-five sixty-five Delros Courts. They could be um taken together as one uh contract. Or we could split it up based on the funding, either the hotel motel tax for the fifty perimeter center east project. And then uh the um capital funds for um forty-five sixty-five Delros Court. The fifty perimeter center east project will consist of the metal storage facility uh that's on that property now. And the surrounding concrete sidewalks will leave the parking lot in place because it acts as a trailhead for the new uh bridge, a perimeter bridge over in that area. Um, this will open up that facility to then roll into design for the future park property. Um, the concept for that location, what it shows is that outside uh exercise facility is basically where the building sits now. If you need some orientation on in the park. Um, we've also um y'all surplus to all this equipment that was in that building. So uh John Gates is working on the cell of the stained glass right now with the conservancy. So that all of those those items will be gone and removed. Anything of value will be gone before demolition takes place. Um, the second portion of this contract is the Delros Court property, which is Waterford. Uh, what we determined was that the bathroom facility and pool house over there was just too far gone. Try to rehabilitate. Uh, it wasn't ADA compliant. It would have required significant amount of money to bring it up to code. And it had a lot of rotten wood on it. Um, so we felt that the best um plan now at this point was to demolish it. Along with the the pool, the surrounding pool deck, uh, graded all in place. We'd have utilities there already to uh put in a future bathroom facility. Uh, which could be put in for a substantially cheaper cost than what it would have taken us to uh upgrade the the building that was there. Uh, plus it had all the existing pool um items in there, the pumps and all that kind of stuff that we would have to dispose of anyway. Uh, so with that, we're going to uh, as I said, take out the pool deck, the pool, um, the pool house. And uh, remove all the existing chain link from around the tennis courts and around the facility. Replace the chain link around the tennis courts or rehab it. Um, which will be a separate project outside of the the demolition. But all in all, these two come in at eighty-three thousand dollars with some contingency. So we're asking for a contract award of ninety-one thousand three hundred dollars uh to do both locations.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, uh, Brett, Brett, it's um Lynn. And I'm curious, will this this company will recycle as much as possible, I presume?
Yes. Yeah, that's typically what keeps our demolition costs down is we give salvage rights to the demo company. So they're able to recycle the metal and get money for that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Joe?
On uh Brett, it looks like you're keeping one structure there um on the forty-five sixty-five Delros Court.
Yes, Councilman. I appreciate you mentioning that. The pavilion that is over there is a steel-framed structure with wooden rafters. Needs a little bit of cosmetic work, uh, maybe some new roofing, but it's a good-sized pavilion with a nice concrete deck. So we're gonna just reuse that uh pavilion.
Great. Super. Thank you.
Anybody else? I could use a motion then, please.
Move to approve.
Uh, move by Jim, seconded by.
I second.
Stacy. Um, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please signify if you're supporting it by raising your hand. Pam, are you frozen? Wait a minute. Hold on one second. Pam, are you frozen? Okay, Pam is frozen. Okay, um, that passes uh six to oh, because I think Pam might have gotten frozen, Sharon.
Okay, Mayor.
Let's see. She'll come back on.
The next item is contract award for park design at perimeter center east.
So on this uh item, Council, we put out a informal written quote for design services for the park property at perimeter east. Uh, C H A Consulting Incorporated uh seemed to be the one that had the most um knowledge for what we were looking for at the cost that fit within the budget for this project. Um, their final cost is ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, which will include um taking the preliminary design concepts to final design, uh, bid preparation and construction admin uh for when we actually do go to construction. Uh, the concept is attached in your packet, so you can see what's involved with the park. It's a pavilion, the plaza, playground, restrooms, like I was mentioning before, the exercise lawn, uh, an open lawn and and the parking area. Uh, that is currently there that would be re-talked. Uh, we felt like they had uh very good knowledge and experience in building additional parks around the area. They've done several in Gwinnett. Uh, they're very high quality. Uh, and the price was uh was very good for the services that that they are gonna be able to do for us. Uh, what we hope to do is have this park completely uh designed, uh, have full construction documents ready to go for when uh Council is prepared to utilize uh future hotel motel money for the construction of it.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Turn my head for no questions. All right. Um, I need a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Move by John, second by move by John, second by Jim. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, raise your hand, please, if you're supporting this, signifying support. All right, uh, Sharon, that's unanimous.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make sure that we had the last vote correct with uh Councilwoman Tomlin.
Yes. Yeah. Pam, did you mean to vote yes?
I did, I did. In fact, I froze. My internet went out and then it snapped back on, so I'm like, ah!
Right. So uh Sharon, can you correct that in the record, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My computer stopped.
The next item is approval of Travelers Insurance invoice with the neighbors.
Good evening, um, here to present the Travelers Insurance, which will cover all casualty and property insurance for the period May the first, two thousand twenty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And this is the same carrier that we are using, have been using for the last couple of years. Uh, the new um premium will be four hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, we had an increase of fourteen percent and that was attributed to planes that were in the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen year. Um, with our business auto and we were exceeding what our premium amount that applies to that by six hundred and sixty-two percent. So um we're going to recommend that we stay with Travelers. Hopefully next year that will drop off of our record and we can get hopefully a more competitive price going forward.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none. Um, I need a motion, please.
Move to approve the bid for insurance travelers.
Move by Pam.
Second.
Second by Jim. Um, sig- any other questions or discussion? Uh, signify I by raising your hands, please. Uh, Sharon, that's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is consideration of amendment to purchase and sell agreement for forty-five fifty-three and forty-five fifty-five North Schallford Road. This will be presented by Cecil McClendon.
All right, Mayor and Council, uh, what we have here is just uh consideration of an amendment to the Schallford contract. Um, what it basically does is move back some of the timelines, generally thirty days. Um, what has happened in in discussing this with the Council for Summit is, you know, Emery, who is also a a party to working with uh Summit Construction on this, has basically had a very hard time getting the the decision-making structure to be able to focus on this because of their response to COVID nineteen. And I think it makes pretty good sense that that has taken their their primary focus during this. And um as a result, I think there are just some conversations over there that are not, there's there's not a lack of interest. It's just getting to it uh on behalf of the organization that sort of had to deal with this dramatic situation. What the uh the purchase and sale agreement, the First Amendment does, is we set specific dates in. In the original contract, we said, you know, sixty dates from the sixty days from the effective date. Um, you'll see over here, the first uh, the First Amendment is in the title examination. And it just gives them um through July seventh to do their initial title exam. Uh, and it brings the next two paragraphs consistent with that, using that. The July seventh has now become the uh the title objection period. So we've taken the sixty days out of the next two paragraphs. Um, the free look period has been been extended through July twenty-second. Um, in the zoning contingency, we have moved it to June twenty-second for them to be able to get in their um their rezoning plan. And I think there is conversation. I spoke with Richard on this and there have been conversations and that is moving forward to some extent. Um, the the final process is out in November. The one thing that changed from, I think, the previous conversation. They have asked that if it is not, the zoning is not completed by November ninth, they can extend the process through January eighth. And the drop dead date where if it's not done, it's just over, has moved from uh December uh thirty-first to March second, two thousand twenty-one. So really just moving the date back some because the entire process has has gotten uh slow out of the gate here in responding to the the pandemic.
Okay, um, does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, okay. Um, will we get Eric, will we get occasional updates on this?
Absolutely. We want to keep the the Council fully briefed on this, along with a handful of other issues as we proceed through COVID nineteen stuff. And so um, I don't know, Richard McLeod, I believe he's listening in on the phone as well. And Richard, if you'll keep us all, keep me posted and I'll keep the Council posted as the applicant re- um, its inquiries for the rezoning. And so we can all understand where they are and make sure we're on track. Thank you.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments, concerns? John?
Thank you, Cecil. As far as the document, will there be a consolidated uh new document? Or will we have to read the old one along with the new one to sort of see where we're at? I'm just wondering as far as the document control, will there be a new document?
Uh, what we would do is this would just serve as the First Amendment. So you would, in this case, you would have the original contract as supplemented by this. And to get to the final, you would compare and contrast the two. But the they're very, sort of, they're limited provisions in this. So sort of a restated document would not be typical in this situation.
All right, I just had to go find the original document, so I want to keep them together. I I had to go find the original to start comparing sentences and paragraphs and just for future reference, I'll have to do the same. I now have the documents together, so I'm. I now have the documents together, so I'm okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Need a motion, please?
Move to approve the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement.
Moved by Jim, seconded by.
Second.
Pam. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote showing your hands, all in favor. Unanimous Sharon, thank you all. Any discussion items? Okay, seeing none. Public comments, Ginger, do you want to start that process?
If anyone has any public comments, please raise your hands on the Zoom meeting and I'll give you access to speak. I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you, Ginger. City manager comments?
Okay, Mayor and Council, I want to bring you up to date on the the report you'll be receiving later this evening. And part of what I want to say for this particular meeting was, our goal as staff was to try to bring the council up to date on several items since we haven't been able to meet in person. And I hope the reports and presentations that we had tonight fulfilled that that goal. And if there's anything that that we can do for the next meeting or any information, all the staff is readily available and happy to to present at any point in time. And the going down the department list, the police have been busy with normal operations and they're also doing things that were mentioned tonight, which was when the chief mentioned the flyers that we're handing out to the businesses to make sure everybody's in compliance and understands the the governor's rules and regulations. When you read the report later tonight, you'll see that that unfortunately crime doesn't take a break for very long. We didn't, and I wouldn't say crime is up, it's just you do have a few items that have come in. And they had actually reduced for a brief point in time, pickpockets, you know, shoplifting, things of that nature that are just small items that continue to keep the police busy. But it's what normal police stuff, they are. Human resources, one thing that Nicole and Heather have been working on quite a bit, which is our workplace timeline document and return to the workplace policy as well as well as our telework policy. Those documents are ongoing. Both Heather and Nicole have attended many webinars and to be sure we're up on the latest trends of what we need to be doing and how we should handle employee issues both in City Hall and at home. The Economic Development Department, they've been working closely with Small Business Loan Fund of creating that with Decide to Cab and other DeKalb municipalities. There's a meeting Wednesday with the Development Authority to discuss the creation of the Small Business Loan Fund. It'll be interesting to see from Michael how that discussion goes. Also, we continue to track and share information on the latest federal, state and local assistance for small business. Last week, we held the first Zoom meeting of the Recovery and Readiness Roundtable, which is a coalition of business and property owners to share best practices and timing on the on the reemergence from our stay home requirements. So as business businesses start to come along back online, you know, what can we do? That we as the city have done, we're are here to help any way we can and to get the information out as accurately as possible. Public works, you heard a good bit from Michael tonight on our, some of our capital projects, the paving does continue and and we've paved quite a few streets in in Dunwoody, Dunwoody Walk, Harris Circle, Harris Trail, Mill Stream Drive, and also working in the perimeter area, Hammond Drive, just to name a name a few of the streets. Stormwater projects are continuing as well. And also, we finished up the final paving on Roberts Drive with the Georgia Development Partners in front of the new Austin School. So we're finalizing those that work as well. We're also, we've been, one project that came up tonight, and and I was going to just talk about it briefly, which was the Shandley Dunwoody Road and Spalding Intersection Project. We are still working closely with some of the neighbors over there. There are a lot of moving parts to any project, especially we have multiple property owners. We are trying to be very sensitive to the area in terms of stormwater. We don't want to cause any trouble on on somebody's property. And some of the trouble, as I say, may be currently there. There may be stormwater issues from many years ago where there was not a a good way to channel the water. So we want to correct those issues. And there's one neighbor in particular that we're working very closely with and to try to channel water away from their property. They've had a problem for many years with water on their property. So we want to rectify that problem while we're there. The community, community development, building inspections continues to fulfill quite a few inspections, fifty-two inspections since the last report. And so that that keeps going. Code enforcement is out doing their work and you'll see the list of statistics in in your report tonight. Just as another note in that department, we did the demolition plans have come in for PF Chang Restaurants, that project's moving, moving forward. The stop work order was lifted over at the terraces for their, when we went for the reinspection. Also very active in plan review and permit tax. So hopefully, once we get through this part, these are good signs for the economy. So I'm hoping that these trends will continue and accelerate if we can get through the next few months of of COVID. Also, we are working what we can with the comp plan, including GIS, working on the mapping. So we'll have stuff to bring to y'all at a future date as well. And you'll read more about that in the report tonight. Communications, Jennifer's done an outstanding job of getting the word out, keeping our website updated. And there's there's quite a a long explanation, some some links in the report that she's put together for that for that tonight as well. And then, as I move to the last couple of departments here, which are Parks and Recreation. Recreation staff has started a pen pal program with Country Gardens. And so they're trying to do things, since we can't be in person, what can we do online? So they've done an excellent job with that as well to try to keep people's interest and keep their recreational activities going. Finance, there's a collection report in here for the hotel collections by month. And you'll see the trends with that. Tax collections are at sixty-nine percent. And which is short, just to put that in perspective, short by eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's for occupational tax. So that money will come in at some point in time. But right now, because of the, we have, you know, given a grace period or furthered our grace period for that, which is good for for the businesses. And I just wanted to give you an update of where we are on that. Also, just as a footnote for the public, the hotel motel tax, you'll see in the little chart, you can see it was stable for January, stable for February, then March, it went down, cut in half. And then we figure April will be very slim for that month. The Clerk's Office is our open record request, fifty-seven requests in the past week. Also, as we all know, Sharon stays busy with keeping the all the contracts signed and in the good order and also getting ready for these meetings that we have. The the Planning Commission meeting, just as a note, is going to be, I think, on March the twelfth. That'll be the virtual meeting. We're still under the, I mean, sorry, I said March, excuse me, May twelfth, thank you. May the twelfth, it'll be our virtual meeting. And we're still under the state of emergency from the Governor's Office. So that will probably be the last virtual Planning Commission meeting at this point until further notice. We'll probably, we'll have to go to a live meeting set up after that. But I'm glad to answer any questions. Once again, I will praise the staff for the work that they're doing and for the and for keeping us all informed. And but I will send you that report, the conclusion of this meeting.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric? See, any, thank you, Eric, for giving us so much information. Appreciate that. It's very helpful. I turned myself off because I'm running the meeting. It is time for council comments. You want to just raise your hand if you have anything? Tom?
Yes, obviously, we, there's been a lot of focus on, you know, some of the negative effects of COVID nineteen. But there have been some positives, and I'm certainly not trying to downplay the seriousness of what we've been dealing with. But one of the positives that I've enjoyed seeing is how many people are out there enjoying the outdoors, walking, running, riding their bikes on on our local streets. It's it's been great to see families out there and and enjoying those types of activities. And it is my hope that these activities will continue once we get to the other side of this crisis. Speaking of that, as the state begins to start to open up, and we were already seeing it, there's an increase in car volume out there. People are starting to get back to some normal activities, getting out in their cars. And so I'd just like to remind everybody to please be aware of the pedestrians and bikers that are out on the streets. There's a significant increase in those numbers. Please be safe when you're out on the roads doing that. Also, somewhat, I don't want to say coincidentally, but it's 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 a good coincidence that on May first, Dunwoody's Vulnerable Road User Ordinance goes into effect. And I will abbreviate vulnerable road user to V R U because it's a lot easier to say. But this this ordinance goes into effect on May first. It was approved by council back in November. It's the first ordinance of its type in the state of Georgia. And the intent of this law is to protect our V R Us, which are our pedestrians, our bike riders, essentially anyone using the streets that is not protected by the steel cage of a car. So that would extend to to road workers as well. Police officers, anyone out on the streets, pedestrians, bikes, skateboarders, et cetera. So this, this, because this is a new law and a first of its kind in the state of Georgia, I want to ensure that everyone familiarizes themselves with the requirements of it. And I and I won't go into them now. Our communications team has put together a good short video with some information as well as a flyer. And I'd also like to take this opportunity, Eric, you and I have discussed this. I'd like on an agenda item on our next council meeting to just be a staff presentation. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave that up to you to designate the most appropriate way of doing that. But a staff presentation on the new ordinance, as I said, the main purpose for requesting that is that this is the first of its kind in the state of Georgia. And we want to be sure that everyone is aware of the new laws and its requirements so that people can follow them. So thank you. And be safe out there.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else?
Yes.
I was paying, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Richard McLeod and Community Development Department, along with Dunwoody P D. I'm handling the home on Shandley Dunwoody. It's a delicate situation and they're doing this, you know, we're getting a lot of emails and a lot of calls and texts on that home. And so thank you for working closely with that person in that home. And also, speaking of Dunwoody P D, Chief Brogan, happy birthday.
I have a prop.
Happy birthday.
Right? And was that it? Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else? See, Chief, I had a prop for you. Happy birthday, see?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I have a couple of things. And I'm going to try to share some, a document in just a minute, but we'll see if that works. The tomorrow morning at ten thirty, is it tomorrow, Perimeter connects, you can Google it, they're having a coffee with a virtual update. Google them and you'll find out about it. It's their first virtual activity. It's at ten thirty, nine thirty, Google it. Or Joe, just tell me what time it is.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Nine, okay, nine o'clock. Thank you. And also, I want to commend anonymous Dunwoody teenager who has started a little movement called Dunwoody Does Deeds. And it's all about doing good deeds for Dunwoody. If you go to my mayor's Facebook page, you can find a link. Where everyone is doing such nice works, you know, as Tom said, you know, the upside, one of the upsides is everybody's outside. I would say that neighbors are working together and everything I would expect our community to do, you always make me proud. Please continue to remember that the Community Assistance Center and Malachy's and Jewish Family Services have food pantries that are serving our most food insecure families during this time of tremendous uncertainty. And I'm going to see if I can share a document really fast. Let's see if this will work. Yes, all right. So these are resources for testing. And if you listen to Governor Kemp's press conference, or you've been following COVID at all, testing is one of the really important strategies that we're going to use to make progress as we go through the different phases of reentering the economy. And these, it's important that you know, if you have any symptom at all, or if you are a first responder or believe you have been exposed or a healthcare worker, you can get tested now. You have to make an appointment. There is a testing facility from DeKalb County Public Health in Dunwoody. And I know there's other testing sites throughout the region. But if you'll call, your physician may not be able to refer you to the public health facilities. But you can call your physician and get a referral, or you can call one of these numbers or the website through Augusta, which is the medical school. They have a virtual screening that also will take you through. And the goal is to get everyone who has any symptoms tested. So I'm sharing these resources with you all now so that you can have the phone numbers or the websites. You can always email me if you can't take them down wherever you are now. Or I'm not an expert, but I can point you to the the resources because testing is a big deal. And the state has amped up their testing. They now have a mobile testing unit that they're going to deploy in areas that have spikes. Right now, that's in the Gainesville, Georgia, Hall County area. But the mobile testing can move where needed. But please reach out to me if you have any questions about how to get a test. But it, the messaging has changed pretty dramatically from when we started this as to who can get a test. Originally, you had to be pretty ill or a first responder. And now, if you have any symptom at all and would like to be tested or feel like you need to be tested, please use those resources I shared. And with that, I will take, we don't have executive session. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Joe moves, seconded by.
Second.
Jim. All in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Because you get to stay online by yourself. We will see you next time. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're good one.